Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the September 28th Board of Selectmen meeting. As usual, we will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of September 13th, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
And is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 14th, 2023?
I actually have a small correction.
You got it.
So, one word is missing. It says that I didn't know about Eastern Greenwich Civic Center. I didn't know about the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center tour, so I just want to add that. And as I read the minutes, I realized that... As I read the minutes, I realized I hadn't articulated the cause of my surprise because... So, it's true that FOIA precludes all of us, the Board of Selectmen, from meeting outside of a posted public meeting. It also precludes a quorum of us from meeting, and because we're only three, that's two of us in any meeting, including and especially meetings with outside members of the public. So, I just want to caution us going forward that that... Those are the FOIA rules. I'm sure that no, you know, business had been conducted on this tour, so I'm not worried. And it did give me, thank you, an opportunity. Public Works is offering me a tour, my own tour, of the Civic Center. I'm looking forward to it. And members of the Energy Management Advisory Committee will also be joining us. So, thank you so much.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Yes, thank you. And again, before I start my updates, I'll repeat the reason why we met the last time. I thought I explained it pretty clearly, so I'll have to do it again since you brought it up again, that it was not a planned meeting and that I had planned to do it myself for a while, but we were actually meeting down the road, so I asked her if she wanted to join. And you're right, we did not conduct town business, so... And the town attorney is here and would back me up on that. So, if you're... You know, we can go out to dinner.
Absolutely.
As long as we're not talking about town business.
That's absolutely right.
And that's going to happen. That's going to happen from time to time. Sometimes you and I have been together without Lauren, and so...
Lots of times.
Lots of times.
And we talk about baseball, although I don't know anything about baseball.
Yeah, but people... Yeah, you'll learn. But just don't listen to Ken. But the... Just, I mean, for going for... Most people don't understand that it's really... It's a difficult situation we're in because you can be close with somebody on the board, but if they're in a different party, you just can't pick up the phone and go in there and start talking about it. It puts you in a... And that's why we tried to, four years ago, right before the pandemic, we started having what was called workshops, and we'd have two a month. And because we wanted to catch up together, we still had to notice it. So, it turned out to be when we wanted to just catch up on work, the press was coming and the public was coming, and then the pandemic hit, and then it just got to be too crazy. But the whole intent was to, in this case, allow the minority member to have a chance to meet with us and all of us get a chance to... Three of us to discuss... It worked for a while, but then the pandemic hit. But anyway, we will work with the system we have. It's not perfect, but it's what we have.
I understand, and thank you for that. And like I said, it's every opportunity to explain to the public, because we often, as a board, have members of the public say, "Can we have a special meeting with you?" And we have to explain all the time that, no, we cannot meet outside of public meetings.
Yeah, and then again, we have to keep telling them that if they see us together at CFCF, that we're, you know, hopefully not discussing town business.
That's right.
It's confusing to people, and I don't certainly understand that.
I don't shop where they shop.
Probably nor should you. Okay. On the 15th, I was honored to attend the 75th anniversary dinner for the Byram Vets over at T&J's. It was a great night and certainly wanted to congratulate them on three quarters of a century of really promoting veterans' issues here in town. Speaking of which, on October 9th, we'll be celebrating the 100th anniversary of the St. Lawrence Society, was started by immigrants from a town called Rose, which is where many of us in Cosco are from, and they built it to help the immigrants and to help each other get along in a... Not only in a new town, but in a new world to them. And it certainly... It started out as helping each other, and now they help the community, and they donate a lot of things to our community. So, we'll be looking forward to the flag raising on the night and coffee and tea back at the club at 9:00, and then, of course, a big dinner at the St. Lawrence Club. If you haven't got your tickets yet, please do. It's always a fun night. On the 16th, we had a... We... I think the three of us were there to wish four people well in their retirement at the accredited fire department's annual dinner, which was fun, and certainly they were certainly well-deserving of all the accolades they received that day. And we had the Town Service Awards for the town of Greenwich. The 20th, the biggest one, longest-serving, was Lynn Krucho still, 45 years here. So, it ranged from five to 45 years, so that was a fun day. We had a successful flood/storm prep forum. Emergency Operations Director Joe LaSella was terrific, and, you know, I think, because I've been in contact with him every day and been through these things so much that I kind of knew all this stuff, and I learned several things that day. In fact, he had me cleaning my gutters with a new tool the other day. So, it's the little things that sometimes can help us when it comes to storm preparation. The Children of the Fallen Patriots here in town had an event in Old Greenwich on the 21st. They've raised... So, James was there, James Waters. They've raised $70 million for 3,000 kids who lost their parents, their father, in times of war. So, what a great organization and what a great cause. On the 23rd, we had all of our events washed out sadly, except for the American Legion, which went indoors for their barbecue, and the Ableist Event that night at Tamarack was Dancing with the Stars, and I sat that one out, but it was a fun night. On the 26th, we had... We reached Geraldine Christopherson a happy 100th birthday. On the 27th, I want to thank DPW HR and all of the departments that helped with the Health Fair and the Health Department and all the organizations that were there. It was called the Health and Safety Forum Fair, but it was well-attended and certainly, again, lots of things were handed out there that will be helpful for all of our town employees. On the 29th, we're going to do the Rear Cancer Day Proclamation here at Town Hall at 1:00. That's Friday. And then Friday night, Stephanie Palmino is being awarded... Given an award, and it'll be Stephanie Palmino Day also in Greenwich. DART is... Dana's Angels is having their walk this Saturday at 9:00 at Todd's Point. 2:00, we have the Benny Park Cleanup with Tom McKinney. 3:00, that day, we have the Historic Preservation Concert at Putnam Cottage. 3:30, it's Herbie Pacino Day, and Herbie is retiring from the Portchester Police Fire Department, but he is a Greenwich resident, brother of former State Rep. Mike Pacino. 4:00, Glove Up Greenwich starts with, I think, nine fights that night, and we certainly wish our own Joe Kelly, one of the headliners that night, well. Joe's making his final bout that night. He fought in the 1986 Golden Glows and did pretty well. On Sunday, the first, October 1st, is the YWCA Domestic Violence Walk in Bruce Park as usual, and 11:00, we have the KFC Flea Market. On the 2nd, which is, to many of us, Bucky Depp Day, we have the Active Transportation Forum Task Force. So, that's going to be... That is the Bike Task Force we put together. It's now the Active Transportation Task Force, so we'll be doing that with Bobby D'Angelo and Vin DiMarco. That'll be 6:00 in here. On the 5th, a busy night, Dave Tice Award, our great friend. His award will be at Tamarack at 6:00 this year. A recipient is our own Mary Hull. At 6:00, the same time at Indian Harbor, is the National Service Award, and Jan and Anne Dubois are going to be getting an award there. Well-deserved. Also, at 6:00, the Gun Awareness Event is at LaScalle. So, some of us are going to try to get to all three of them. It's going to be tough, but we'll try and do it. On the 6th, there's Breast Cancer Alliance, 9:00 Flag Raising. Also, the Oktoberfest is that night at 7:00. And Congressman Himes is having his Town Hall Forum in this room at 1:00 on October 7th, Saturday. And as I mentioned, the 9th is Columbus Day, 9:00 here, and then that night at the St. Lawrence Club. And then the 50th anniversary of the... Can't even read my own writing here. I'll have to get back to you on that. It's at the Senior Center, and it's an organization I never heard of. Eating and Tarrying?
Yes, the greats.
What is Eating and Tarrying?
It's the Great Eating and Tarrying Society. It's how they get together, and they did the luncheons and things like that, and...
Been there a million times. I've never even heard of that. It's great.
Yeah, it's almost like Friends of the Senior Center in a way.
Interesting. It's 11:30, and then, of course, the legal voters debate is... The first one of all of the debates is on the 10th at 6:30 here. Sorry for the length of that.
It's actually the 11th.
The 11th. That's what I said. Just testing you. I think I put you guys to sleep, so I figured I'd throw... Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning. So, as usual, I'll just talk about the things that I've been working on. So, as liaison to the Commission on Aging, they have issues, ongoing issues with the elevator in the Senior Center. So, the Building Department came and met with the board and just talked about expectations and information on whether to decide, is it worth repairing, which definitely needs to be repaired, or is it worth replacing, because a portion of the funds to get it into better working condition is going to be supplied by the Friends of the Senior Center. So, it was a good meeting just to get everybody on the same page as to what everyone was looking for and what could be accomplished. The... I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board as the BOs liaison, so the forum is tonight at 7:00. I don't think you mentioned that, Fred. Fred is a panelist. A lot of people do have questions about what is the trust, how is it being used, the ARPA funds that went into the trust, is there any restrictions on that? Some of this is RTM precipitated in terms of, you know, making things clearer, and we have continued to meet with developers who are looking to access funds in order to scale back development and create affordable housing. I know there's a lot of dialogue, affordable housing, workforce housing, so I want to be clear, there is a distinction because there's a median income threshold, and when we say workforce housing, we don't necessarily mean firemen or policemen or teachers. It's probably more folks that are maybe working in restaurants in Greenwich, so just to be a little clear on that. With SNAP, the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee, we have added a new element to our nomination submission form, asking people if they are an elector in town, because in case people don't know, in order to serve on a board commissioner committee, you have to be an elector. We do ask for party affiliation, and some people have misinterpreted that to mean, who would I vote for, not what party I'm registered to vote as, or unaffiliated. You don't have to be registered with a particular party to be an elector. West COG, thank you, Fred, for going to the West COG meeting, but the LOTSIP applications are in, Local Area Transport Capital Improvement Program. We've talked about this before. It was LOTSIP that was going to do the bumpouts at Arch and Havemeyer. LOTSIP was what we were able to use to do the frontage road and Byram improvements. So, every municipality submits, and it's allocated based on the size of the COG or the Council of Governments. There are nine Council of Governments in the state of Connecticut. West COG is like the second-largest, so we do get, as a COG, you know, more share of the program. Last but not least, Central Middle School Building Committee. And you see, it's crossed off on our agenda because it was not on, and it was on, and then it was not on, and then crossed off. So, thank you, Ken. I know we drove you a little bit crazy. Just feedback from the Law Department, and I think if everyone's looking in the packet, we have the municipal improvement referral for Old Greenwich, and the expectation is that Central would follow a same format. In some ways, you know, we're getting a lot of questions because people are asking, "Didn't you vote already to refer?" Because the Board of Selectmen refers municipal improvement status to planning and zoning. Didn't you do that already for these two projects? Yes, we did, but now we're doing it with more of the proper paperwork in place. And to be clear, we have not, as we've been in office, and Janet, you... Jill before you, we haven't necessarily been privy to a template for people to submit to the Board of Selectmen in order for us to submit our referral to planning and zoning. So, we're getting to the place where we will have a template, we will have an expectation as to what materials that we need to see in order to, you know, move these projects along, and I think I speak for my colleagues, we are committed to moving these projects along, and that's my update.
Thank you, Lauren. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning, and thank you. So, if we didn't realize that we're officially into fall, this morning is a sweater day, so happy fall, everybody, and I celebrated. Did you mention the flu clinic yesterday?
I did the health, I didn't mention the flu.
Okay. Well, as part of it, I celebrated by getting my flu shot.
How are you feeling?
I'm okay. I'm okay. Slightly sore, but okay.
That's good.
And Fred is testing me because you had a lot of events that you just listed. I think that there are a couple that I can add to that. For instance, later today at 1:00 at Second Congregational Church, Greenwich Sustainability Committee is having one of its Speaker Series events. It's called Trees, Forests, and Brain Health. Hopefully, I can make it at least a part of that. Did you mention At Home in Greenwich on the 29th?
Yes, I left that at home, but it's Stephanie Palmino.
Got it, okay.
Sorry.
Got it. Nope, we're good. Next Wednesday, the Retired Men's Association will be featuring the Honorable Chris Shays as its featured speaker. I definitely hope to get there. It's entitled Democracy If You Can Have It. On the 10th, yet another event on the 10th is the Food Insecurity Forum, and I think... I think that's it.
Thank God for Janet and Lauren. We're a team, so we always catch each other's omissions, so thank you. Going on to old business, we have a request for consideration of MI status for OGS and the renovation, and James Waters is here again to present. Good morning, James.
Okay, that was a little... Good morning. Thank you for having me, and that was a little speedier than I thought. Thank you. So, I'm James Waters, and I'm here on behalf of the Old Greenwich School Building Committee. As you know, and as Ms. Raven articulated, this board's already referred the Old Greenwich renovation project to P&amp;Z for consideration of our municipal improvement application. That was back in April, and you voted 300. I know our building committee, the OGS community, and the Board of Education were appreciative of your support, and we proceeded to spend money based on that referral. Okay. Look, now we have submitted all required materials, including our MI application and our site plan to P&amp;Z. We will be appearing before P&amp;Z on Tuesday, October 3rd. The community is very excited about that. I'm happy for any additional questions this board may have, and I think I would ask you today to reaffirm your April vote. If the board would like, I'm happy to give a little bit more of an update on the project over the last six months, if that's helpful, but I don't want to waste people's time either.
I certainly don't need it, but I think just in case, if there's a short version of it, just somebody who may be sitting here may not have been up to date on what you guys have been doing.
Sure. So, yeah, let me quickly run through that. So, since April, we hired a construction manager at risk and recently a commissioning agent, so we have our full project team in place who's working hard. In June, the OGS Building Committee completed the schematic design process, which is accompanied by two reconciled and independent estimates, and we made some proposed revisions to the OGS ed specs. One thing I want to point out that this board certainly deserves credit for is that all, at least partial credit for, is that all votes in the OGS Building Committee have been unanimous to date, all votes. And, you know, I think that demonstrates the collaborative and constructive nature of all members of the committee which you nominated. Also, so in June, the Board of Ed unanimously supported our schematic design. The Board of Ed unanimously supported our revisions to the ed specs. The Board of Ed unanimously supported our project estimates, and the Board of Ed unanimously supported requesting construction funds from the BET so that we could try and meet the June 30 deadline for applying to the state. Unfortunately, as you know, the BET rejected construction funds for OGS with, you know, really, the main things floated were ideas that would violate the ed specs and contradict what the community has told us they want. But since then, we have pressed forward on three broad fronts to get to today, working hard through the summer. First, we submitted the Board of Ed-approved schematic design to the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights. There's a resolution agreement about the lack of ADA accessibility at OGS. We provided an anticipated timeline for bridging the building into full compliance as we are required to do, and we highlighted various scenarios under which... When that might occur, based on when the BET might decide to fund the project. We have not yet heard if the OCR, the Office for Civil Rights, will take action to expedite the process, but the Building Committee and School District have fulfilled our obligations to this point. Second, we proceeded with the design development process, which we anticipate completing by the end of the year. This is an in-depth process, which gets more into the details of design and preparation for construction documents, and that is the final pre-construction phase. And third, we worked to get ready for our MI application and preliminary site plan application. This, I can't emphasize this enough, this is a huge lift and was only made possible by the professionals we hired, who showed true teamwork over the summer. So, to this point, the Building Committee has spent or encumbered approximately $400,000. With a lot of in-depth work continuing, we expect to exhaust our current A&E funding by the beginning of 2024. As you know, the BET placed three conditions on the additional $1.086 million in A&E funding, which you, this... Members of this board helped us secure. We thank you for that. But of these conditions, two of them are fully in control of the BET, and the third is related to what I'm here for today, MI status. So, hence our focus on getting to P&amp;Z now. If we don't get through P&amp;Z and the BET doesn't make progress on satisfying the conditions it controls, we expect the project will run out of funding early in 2024. This would mean all work will stop after spending $1 million of taxpayer dollars, and the project would be delayed for at least two years, likely at an additional cost of $5 or $6 million. So, finally, I want to let you know that the Building Committee has now completed seven forums for the public. We have been extremely appreciative of the constructive feedback we've received and the unwavering support we continue to get. People appear to like the direction we're heading and want to get this project done. So, with that, I'm happy for any questions, and I will end by repeating my invitation to any of you to attend a Building Committee meeting Tuesdays at 7:00 a.m. Thank you very much.
James, thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I certainly, again, repeat my support for this, all the work you've done, that the renderings are looking beautiful, and I know this is what the community wants, and I love how you've come to, you know, the place where you are and taking the feedback and also, you know, the other things into consideration for the kids and busing and trying to keep them there and, you know, keeping the character of the building, which everybody loves. So, I'm super supportive, and thank you for all your efforts. Everybody on the committee, we're very, very grateful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you to everyone on the committee. Just a quick question, I'm not as close to this building committee. What were some of the ed spec changes that were adopted?
Yeah, yeah, good question. So, a couple... Few kind of broad things, I would say. First is that there were some more ADA work that we had to do to bring this building into compliance. You may recall that the complaint filed with the OCR was subsequent to the drafting of the ed specs, so there were a couple nits that we had to tweak. Second is there's some additional abatement that will be required that we've found based on our diligence, and, you know, it's just, you know, things you got to do if you're going to touch certain areas. And then, the addition, the original... The addition that's part of this project, the ed specs called for it to be about 10,000 square feet. We have... The Building Committee is actually recommending it be smaller than that, so I think the latest is somewhere around 7,300 square feet. And so, you know, things like that. The other thing that we wanted to make sure is that this will be a phased occupied renovation, no modular classrooms, right? Absolutely not, you know, no busing involved, anything like that. But to do a phased occupied renovation, you're going to incur costs, phasing costs, to make sure that the building is kept safe for the kids and the learning is not impacted. You know, you've got to clean... You know, you isolate an area, wall it off, you know, work on it, clean it, you know, and that does involve some costs that wasn't... Weren't originally incorporated in the ed specs, so things like that.
Got it. Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you. I have a couple of questions, but I first want to affirm, so I am the liaison of this board to the Old Greenwich School Building Committee. I definitely have appreciated how many meetings at 7:00 a.m. every Tuesday, now every other Tuesday. I think I've missed exactly one, and similarly, I mean, attendance has been amazing, so thank you very much. You know that I am fully committed to supporting this project. I will definitely be happy to take this revote and support the project. But I do want to take this opportunity to have... Pose a few questions about how we got here process-wise, because I definitely... I'm wondering how this looks, how this reflects on our Building Committee, the P&amp;Z process, if there's any implications for future MI processes. You know, because as my colleague has already mentioned, this board hasn't had that many MI applications come before it to greenlight it. You know, it happened... It happens that I'm a civil engineer, but, you know, future... Future building... Sorry, Board of Selectmen may or may not have someone who's an architect or a civil engineer. We didn't have a template. We were very mindful of the fact that we didn't have a template, but at the same time, I just want to note, we do have a liaison... Every building committee has a liaison with planning and zoning, and our town planner was very generous and responsive to our questions about the process. So, I definitely... I just want to, you know, make sure that I understand going forward, you know, that we're clear about what the process is and what the implications are. I do know that we have some members of the public who may want to speak to that, and if they want to, this is probably a good time to do that. No?
You're asking for the public? Yeah, we have, yeah, two hands. So, Alan I saw first, and then Peter, to be followed by Peter Quigley.
Thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to go back to what Mr. Waters said a minute ago about why we're doing this. The building has an OCR. That's an Office of Civil Rights, civil rights violation against it. It violates... It violates American civil rights from 50 years ago. Monday, this past Monday, was the 50-year anniversary of the 1973 Rehabilitation Act, which this building, plus others that we have, do not conform to. Let's see. The Rehab Act was signed into law prohibiting discrimination against people with disabilities by federal agencies, federal contractors, and programs receiving federal funds. The Act paved the way for more inclusive workplaces, including at the federal level. It prohibited discrimination and required reasonable accommodations. While progress has been uneven, this law was a major blow to the barriers that kept people with disabilities out of work. The Rehab Act of 1973 also helped ensure access to educations, education for individuals with disabilities at any institution receiving federal funding, like Greenwich Public Schools. This has made classrooms more accessible and opened up, and opened up opportunities for people with disabilities. We're 50 years back. Anybody beside me embarrassed? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alan. Peter Quigley. Good morning, Peter.
I have trouble with these microphones. I'm Peter Quigley. I am embarrassed by that remark, and it, my comments aren't to the merits of these programs to enhance the schools, which clearly need enhancements. The merit versus renovation and new buildings is what I would like to address. On a topic that I don't hear, I hear all of the topics of flag policies, traffic studies, parking, and everything else, but you know what I don't hear, and you ought to be informed, is the environmental hazards and issues in this town of Greenwich. I'm Peter Quigley. I was on the RTM for three terms, 207, 208, through 212. I was on the First Harbor Management Committee. So I've been upland, I've been downland, and I'm back. I'm in District 3, I've come back as an RTM member. And I'm going to tell you all what I don't see. I don't hear the environmental issues discussed at all. I don't hear too much about storm drainage, and I certainly don't hear about dredging, although you have addressed the drainage. Where do you think storm drain, where do you think the stormwater goes? Goes into the harbor. You're not going to have harbors in about 10 years. Three years on harbor commission, three terms in RTM, coming back on my fourth term. Just to put it in perspective, I am embarrassed by those comments, to be honest with you. But I'm also embarrassed by how the kids, students, teachers, and where the public congregates in municipal improvements, that's what MI's are, that there isn't appropriate soil testing done at these sites before or during the site plan discussion. This has nothing to do with the merits, but I would implore you all to be informed on soil testing procedures, and I don't mean the state DEP procedures. Their soil testing, that Mr. Camillo might know about, are very poor. They're testing for grandmother's backyard flower garden, going down one or two feet, and of course, developers come in and they put new soil down to five feet, and so everything looks great. These sites where the public congregates, students, teachers, anyone, municipal improvements should have appropriate soil testing procedures to the EPA standards, federal standards. Now, why? People have forgotten, I've been there for HAMAV, I've been there for MESA, I've been there for Western Middle School, and I have heard both Langin and ICOM talking about how clean these sites were. I was in that CIP process, and suddenly there were discoveries made because appropriate soil testing had not been done to EPA standards at these public sites before the building project even got started. The building projects all got approved, there was a half dozen of us saying, please, have you done appropriate soil testing? I'll name an individual, the head of that building committee, Joe Ross, who's actually a senior vice president of ICOM, stating everything was clean. It was not. Discoveries are made. Right now, that number, I believe posted in the newspaper by Ms. Tarkington, the project was approved for 28 million, it's now costing an additional $40 million to remediate. It's not fair to the taxpayer. It really isn't. That should be discussed upfront, so the full evaluation of what is to be funded by the RTM should be discussed. I'll leave it at that. I do think you're still using the same people that have gone through HAMAV, MESA, Western Middle School. And I see the same thing happening here. So you will hear me, hear from me on different projects. I spoke to Central Middle School a couple weeks ago. It is very difficult to get up at 7:00 a.m. when you have other projects going on and to stay in touch with what's going on here, really. These things move around, P and Z's on Zoom. I'll leave you with those thoughts. I would only ask that soil testing is done as part of the site plan, and I hope P and Z does that as well, so that everything's clean going in, if you're going to shovel-ready. If it's a renovation, you probably don't need it and shouldn't be touching the soil. But a lot of areas in Greenwich, back in the 60s and 70s, unfortunately, filled these sites with this kind of contaminated stuff. So it's for the people who can congregate, I mean the public too, the students, the kids. Thank you, appreciate the time to bring this forward, appreciate it, thank you.
Peter, thank you, and thank you for always reaching out. We're focused, we are focused on storm preparation and flood mitigation, and I know you've been helping with that all along, but we just had a forum the other night, and we're certainly getting ready with a little task force in the coming week, so thank you. Glenn Canner?
Yes.
To be followed by Peter Berg.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Nice to see you.
Good morning. My name is Glenn Canner. I, most of you know me, I want to make a couple of comments related to Ms. McGuigan's comments about process. For the record, I've been a member of the RTM for 14 years, all of that time on legislative and rules. Per our town rules, the Legislative and Rules Committee has a say in the law and rules of the town, but I'm here speaking individually. I was asked to come to possibly observe and make a couple of comments on process. As people are aware, Assistant Town Attorney John Wetmore issued a opinion letter on August 31, 2023. There has been some discussion, including by myself, about that letter, but that's not why I'm here today. My issue with that is that, you know, there's other areas of the law that I think need to be addressed. But specifically, in that opinion letter on page two, Attorney Wetmore says in the middle of the page, "Second 99 of the Charter does not confer on the selectmen, however, any power or authority to approve an MI." So that is the recent opinion by the town attorney, and I, no, I understand, I understand it's the referral, but I just, I just, people just wanted me to comment, just comment, just, just not to, and I think that's what the attorney-
Do you mind if I asked, who asked you to come here and-
What's that?
Who asked you to come here and observe and to make the comments? If you mentioned it, I just would like to know for the record.
Select person McGuigan, and she didn't, she didn't ask me to-
Just wanted it out for the record.
To raise issues, it's just-
Thank you.
And again, I'm speaking as myself, but legislative and rules does have a say, and I just don't want-
Are you the Chair of Legislative-
Okay, what's that?
Are you the Chair of Legislative-
No, 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 I'm speaking, we may, I'm just saying, as a lawyer, you know, many, I'm just, when I, when I look at what Attorney Wetmore said, it seems to contradict weighing in on site plans, but I'm going to leave it at that.
We're not going to get into that debate. I think it was pretty clear, but just, if you, just proceed, because we want to-
No, I just wanted to make that comment, that it appears, what I've read the law to mean is that the select board has, under certain circumstances, if another commissioner or body doesn't make the referral, you have the ability to make the referral. I'm not questioning that. But as far as the conditions and the approval, it would appear that, that the select board, according to the law, doesn't really have jurisdiction to weigh in on that. That's just my observation.
No, no one ever, no one ever claimed it, and I don't know what the issue is, why you, what the, why you made the statement, because we're just referring, we're not approving, and that's pretty clear, and that's, we've been clear from the beginning, so I just don't know why you felt compelled to make the statement.
I just, I just wanted to get it on the record that I, as a lawyer for 40-
I know, but we've been pretty clear, we just refer, so I'm still kind of baffled why you were asked to come here to, and felt compelled to make a statement when we don't approve, no one thinks we approve it, we just refer it. But anyway, it's on the record, so-
No, actually, no, actually, I'll answer. The answer is that my, I wasn't here in June when it was referred, but my understanding is, is that it was referred back today because, because, and I was really asked to come on the, I think on the Central Middle School, that was brought to my attention, but I noted that that was withdrawn. So if, if, let's just use Central Middle School, if that was approved in June, why would they-
It was approved to refer.
Right.
Please say the right words. We didn't approve any municipal improvement status. Our vote was to refer it.
Right.
So it was an affirmative referral.
Right. And so my question, of course, it's been withdrawn from the agenda, but the question is, if, if there were no, if this board doesn't really have jurisdiction to impose conditions, why was it called back for a revisit of that issue? That was really why.
I explained that so that we don't have a template, we didn't have a template, and it has been asked that we create a better package when we refer it. So not the "we," we accept a better package when we refer it to planning and zoning, similar to what Old Greenwich provided today.
Right.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Central Middle School Building Committee, I'm the Board of Selectmen liaison to that committee. And that committee is prepared to put together the same materials to come in front of the Board of Selectmen on our October 12 meeting in time for the planning and zoning meeting, I think it's on the 17th, Claire, correct me if I'm wrong. And we thought, since it was, we had a little confusion within our committee, that's why it was withdrawn. Simple, simple little confusion on the committee. And I'll take the blame for that.
I appreciate Ms. McGuigan asking me to come, because I think process is very important, and I think it's, it's good to, to make observations and raise questions. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Peter Berg.
Morning, Peter.
Good morning, select people. So actually, I'm here today to support Mr. Romeo's project. He's the only one who asked me to be here. But I, but I do want to comment briefly about the MI process. I am the chairman of the RTM's Land Use Committee for the last 10 years. I've been on the committee for at least 15, and I have seen this MI issue many times over the years. I don't agree that you need to see a site plan in order to decide to refer an MI. Under our charter, the only, the only test of an MI is consistency with our plan of conservation and development. What's happened over the years is that the Planning and Zoning Commission and Department has layered on many additional requirements for them to receive an MI application, including a site plan, which is a zoning document, it's not a planning document. And I, the problem with that, I mean, the problem with that is it adds a lot of expenses to a project, that if, if the MI isn't approved, we've spent all that money unnecessarily. The, the site plan must come to planning and zoning at some point, they have public hearings on the site plan, and all of the concerns that Mr. Quigley expressed are site plan issues that should be addressed when they are, when they are studying the site plan. But you don't really, you don't need that for an MI, and it's unfortunate that, that somebody has now told you that you need to add all these additional requirements onto an MI. That's my message.
Okay, Peter, Peter Quigley for a second time.
Having, having been referred to, thank you, Peter. I want a correction made, having been referred to, when my name is used, I like and appreciate the response. Again, I'm Peter Quigley, thank you all for taking my comments. I did not refer to anything about an approval of a site plan, soil testing. My comments to this illustrious group is to be aware of the issue. Simply informative, point of information, okay, Peter? So it does not have anything to do with the municipal improvement, it's just to be aware of the hazards that took away playing time, but health and safety of these kids at HAMAV, at, at High School, and at Western Middle School. Just an awareness, this is an informational exchange, mutual, you can agree with it or not, if you have kids playing in some of these fields, you'd be appreciative of what I'm saying. Thank you very much. It is not regarding your referral at all.
No, we didn't, we didn't take it that way. Your points were well taken, Peter, thank you.
Claire.
Hi, for the record, Claire Kilgallen, just speaking in my individual capacity. I served on the New Lebanon Building Committee, I am familiar with soil, thank you, Peter Quigley. And I serve on the Central Middle School Building Committee, but again, only speaking as myself. To Mr. Quigley's point, I'll just say what's been happening on our project, and in order to get to the point where you submit a site plan per planning and zoning regulations, there is work when you get to final site plan. As part of this work, you must satisfy the Town Drainage Manual, which is extensive, I'll just put it that way, very extensive, and deliberate, and thoughtful, so I want everybody to understand that. Two, in terms of soil, particularly with regard to Central, there was a soil test done back in 2019 for the fields, when at the time, the thought was to replace the play fields and to improve the drainage issue, because although it's not a wetlands, it has wet conditions, because it's not engineered. And at that time, the soil testing was done, and thankfully, it was found to be clear. I looked back into the history, this parcel for Central was bought for the sum of $98,000 circa 1954, and it had been a farmland, an Indian Rock Road did not exist, and it was referred to as Stanwich Road. We have done environmental, you'll see in our reports to the RTM, that in our fourth report, we had already done Environmental One Level Testing. One of the first acts we took as a committee, the GPS was already doing soil testing, and one of the first acts we took last August was to add additional borings to our report, and I see that select person Raven is nodding her head, oh, sorry, select woman, I have to read that. So yes, we have been very mindful of that. I think just in terms of process, yes, I agree, MI is about consistency with the POCD, that is the threshold question. I think over time, what I see is that the P and Z process for site plan, which is literally a separate application, has become intertwined. In fact, if you look at the application for municipal improvement, which is the MI, which is the P and Z form, you describe, you take your demographic information, who's applying, and then there's a paragraph to give your narrative about how it complies with the POCD. There is no reference to say attach a site plan. I think what happened is things got intermarried over time. My understanding of the 1951 statute is, we want to comply with a POCD, are we okay with the use of this property? It's a, it's a conceptual thing. And I think over time, it's gotten intertwined with drawings of a level of detail that actually is at odds with the ethos of the MI, which is, don't spend a lot of money on a project that isn't going to go anywhere. So, so now we have a P and Z process, which I totally respect, but what it forces is the spending of money. You have to do a certain level of work to get to those preliminary site plan drawings. So I would just say that maybe there's a time to sort of refresh that look, and if the thought is, we need to update it to where we are today in 2023, where we have building code regulations, and ADA, and US DOJ, and civil rights, and all these other OSHA, we have to remember that the school is not only a public institution for children, it's a workplace, it's a place of public gathering. And then lastly, I would say that if you are going to be looking at this, the first thing I learned in law school in statutory interpretation is that read on, that was what I was told by Professor Sujan, and you read on. And when you read on in the Charter, we have a statute that came along in 1969, it's called Article 9, which is about school building committees. And it gives school building committees certain rights, including the right to request appropriation, which, following the- which, following the 1951 statute regarding MI, suggests that no action has been superseded with respect to the appropriation. So I think if we're going to do a refresh on the MI process, we need to look at the town charter in its, in its fullness and update it from 1951 to take account for the school building committee. And then lastly, I would say that the idea behind a, I understand that when this board is making a referral, you want, the intent is, if we show you ABC, we're going to show ABC, an ABC idea, or talk about an ABC idea with planning and zoning. We're not trying to show you XYZ and then give planning and zoning ABC, right? It's, it's being clear in intent. And we're doing that. And the fact is that by charter, we have an ex officio member in the form of Board of Selectmen members who know what the intent of the project is. So I would, I would say that this is actually different from all other municipal improvements because you have, as ex officio, required to have a BOS member who fully knows what's coming before them as an MI. I rest my case. Have a great day.
Thank you, Claire. And while, Peter, we only want to move this along.
You're bringing my name up. I'm sorry.
Peter Quigley for a third time.
Third, last time.
You never know.
If you don't bring my name up, this is informative. There's a good friend of mine, Louis Brandeis, maybe you know, heard of him. I'm not a lawyer, but he says sunshine is the best disinfectant. Please, this is just informative. It is not a Level One. Please, this is not a Level One. You should be testing to Level Three, probably Two or Three, not Level One. So I'm just saying, we learned a lot in three years even, but certainly in 15 years. This makes certain that the soil is not contaminated, that's all.
We got your point, thank you. And I ask everybody speaking to please refrain from using Peter's name. He's getting a lot of steps on his Fitbit.
And can we keep this to Old Greenwich School renovation as opposed to MI in general, please?
Yes, because I wanted to say that if you wanted to.
Because we have other things to talk about today.
The MI, you want to reform it, that's true. But remember, keep in mind, Planning and Zoning did some of these things, and I've been frustrated too over the years. We have a huge flooding problem in town, and every town does. So all the, you know, the Drainage Manual, Manuel, I heard that mentioned, just keep in mind that they take into consideration all that stuff. And I know, it's a, it's a balancing, and, but, but James, you're up.
So just, just for the record, the OGS project is doing environmental testing. I have discussed this matter, we've discussed this matter plenty. Of course, we're doing it, borings, you know, all of that. Just wanted to assure this board that that is being done.
Thank you, James. Okay, so are we?
Soil and water.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request to refer municipal improvement status of Old Greenwich School renovation to Planning and Zoning.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo, is a yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much, James, and everybody who spoke. We have an engaged citizenry here, and it's, it's much appreciated. I think most towns would kill to have that kind of engagement, so thank you. And Peter, you're, you're good. Thanks. Okay. Next up is a proposal for a 30-minute express parking spaces in the Grigg Street parking lot, and we have Luanne Bellantoni here from Parking Services. Good morning, Luanne.
Good morning, Gordon. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Nothing's really happened. We haven't heard any feedback at all from the public, I guess on your side as well, although we would hear from your office. So I'm here to entertain any additional questions. While looking at that gorgeous dog. And, you know, if you have any questions that may have arisen since the first read, I'll do my best to address them.
Thank you. Now, I, I had one friend who lives on Grigg Street reached out about something a little bit different, but certainly none, the only things we've heard in the last several weeks have been positive remarks about this, so unless my, my colleagues heard something different.
I have not. Likewise, thank you for all the work that's gone into this.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you, Luanne. Much appreciated.
So we, you know, we look forward to your vote, and we're ready to hit the ground running if everything is positive today.
Perfect. Thanks, Luanne.
Okay, Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the proposal for 30-minute parking express parking spaces in the Grigg Street parking lot.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo, is a yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Okay, thank you. And before we go on to new business, we have one last item on old business and it's discussion of the proposed flag policy for town buildings. This is a third read, which we did on purpose to get more feedback, and we got tons of it, so. Laura McGeechy of the Town Attorney's Office there. Good morning, Laura.
Good morning. Yes, I'd just like to report back since the last read that we had, is that as a result of the last reading, there was consensus to make sure that it was clear that the process for non-governmental flags, meaning non-federal state or town, that is commemorative or organizational, is by a resolution of the full Board of Selectmen and not by the first selectman solely. So that change was made. And I also, Janet, you also emailed and asked for more information regarding the state and the grandfathering of certain flags, because obviously, I know your position on that. So I had an opportunity to do a deeper dive with the Capitol Police for Hartford, for the state capitol. And I actually spoke with Sergeant, Sergeant Barter yesterday, who's been there for 16 years and administering the policy. And because all that I can find on the website, I wanted to find the written policy for Hartford. And I also wanted to see, because when you go to the website, you see basically a list of prior flags flown, and you see a form to fill out for request. And I did clarify, because I've read some older OLM Legislative Management articles and Legislative Research that did this back in 2010, but that's a bit dated now. And that is actually a result, I guess, the Gadsden flag had been requested to be flown in Hartford back in 2009, 2010, which prompted the Capitol Police and Hartford to enable a policy. And actually, their policy, I did ask for the written policy, it is on the form itself. And so the state capitol policy is only flags, so United States of America, any state flag or political subdivision, which includes the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, U.S. Virgin Islands, any territory or possession subject to U.S. jurisdiction, Indian tribe, any foreign jurisdiction with which the U.S. maintains diplomatic relations or its political subdivisions, to include United Nations flags or any recognized military flags and organizations, which include VFW, American Legion, and POW-MIA flags. Now, I said, however, I know that you've flown other flags. We look at the previously flown flags, and particularly the gay pride flag, because I wanted to ask about that one, because that pursuant to their policy. And if you look at the form, he explained to me, yes, we do fly other flags upon request. What they do is, when they get it in, since it doesn't conform to their policy, they automatically deny it. And then there's a provision on the form to appeal it to the OLM, which is the Office of the Legislative Management. And then it's up to the Director of the Legislative Management to decide to fly a particular flag. So what they call non-compliant flags, just meaning other commemorative flags, and they do it plenty, just so you know. You know, they've flown, you know, Flag of Cincinnati, child wear, you know, welfare flag, overdose awareness flags, whatever the case may be. But I just wanted to obviously put on the record and explain their policy. So it is actually, I think, more stringent than the proposed policy we have here, because it's an automatic denial if it's not outside kind of the Darian model, if you will, or the full prohibition of any other non-governmental flags. And then that's an appeal process. And so, in my opinion, I think this strikes a balance. I know there were talked about, and again, the grandfathering, but that, and there was a request, and Ken put together a list of prior flown flags, but his tenure is relatively short with the town. And again, it, I think that it, and it has been provided in the packet to see what's been flown and what can be projected as a slate. So thinking that the Board of Selectmen, if that's the policy, to approve any non-governmental flags, any commemorative organizational flags, can hear and approve an annual slate, and I, there is language inclusive in there, to be consistent with past practices. So there is a level for consideration. So I just wanted to report back on that. And there's also, they maintain a flag book with the state capitol, and I think, I know that, you know, Mr. Borasik put together the list of flags. Maybe there could be a similar aspect with, you know, having, you know, I guess, a formal book, if you will, on January, to say what flags are flown on what date, so that that's, you know, public record is just a suggestion. So if you have other comments or questions, I just, that's my report back from the last read.
Thank you so much, Laura. Yeah, I look at the, the list here, and it's, it's not even that long, and I suspect over time, you're going to, this list will grow as far as, you know, we do a Greek Independence Day, we do, on the 9th, we're doing the Italian flag, we do the Irish flag on the 17th. I suspect that will grow, and I think future boards will, will allow that. I'm not, I'm not worried about that at all. But I think just having this list every January, at least this board anyway, I would prefer that we see this list every year, because as I've mentioned, meanings of flags have changed, right? I was flying, I posted a, a police flag a few years ago, which was in support of the police, and it always was. And DC Gray reached out to me and said, you realize the flag has been taken over by another group that was an extremist group? And they, so they just, law enforcement decided not to use that flag anymore. And it's like, okay, I took it down. The, the Gadsden flag is a very patriotic one and beloved in our, in our country, and recently, we've seen it fly, flown in places that it shouldn't have been flown, and groups, some groups were using it in the way it wasn't, you know, meant to be flown. And so, you know, I think we have to be very, very careful about that, because things could change. And so it will take a couple minutes, but I'm firmly in favor of going over this again in January, just, just approve it to make sure. And I, any of these flags on here, they're going to be fine, because they haven't, the meaning hasn't changed yet. But over time, we've seen, and I just gave you two examples where flag meanings have changed. So it will keep, it will help the town keep out of trouble, and I'm firmly in favor of going that route there. And again, it would only take a couple minutes each January, and I think it's well worth the review.
I have a little idea. In Section 3A, because people are using the term grandfathered, and you explained to us at the last meeting, you know, what that implies. And I was even thinking, you know, is it grand person these days? Propose a legacy slate of flags, adding that word. And then, you know, we've talked a lot about may, shall, will in previous policies, so to be displayed throughout the calendar year, which will, not shall.
Could you, could you clarify a little bit more what you're proposing? Would we still vote every January on this slate? You're just changing shall from will?
But making it more of an affirmative that that's our intent, is to grandfather, so to speak.
Without saying.
But you're actually proposing to include the word legacy in front of slate of flags, right? So just to be clear, so that would reach each January, the Board of Selectmen shall meet to review the calendar and propose a legacy slate of flags to be displayed throughout the calendar year, which will be consistent, as opposed to shall. Just to be clear, yeah. And.
Okay.
So I would, I would make a motion to amend the current draft with those two changes.
Okay.
All right, I'm not quite there yet. I wanted, I want to start by thanking you for all of the work that has gone into this. And, and my colleagues are right, we have had a lot of feedback on this. I can be persuaded that the town needs a policy, but it has to be the right policy. And while the purpose and scope lay out that the intention is to respect our cherished traditions, in my mind, voting every January doesn't accomplish that. It just, it just leaves room for the, for future boards to vote against one of these flags. And everybody has seen the list, it's been posted. I mean, these are, these are, I don't, I can't see how the meaning of any of these flags would change where we would want to vote against them. Actually, on my, on my note that it's been posted, I do also want to reflect, this is our third read, but the, the policy in its current form was only posted 24 hours ago. So I do know there's been a lot of disappointment in our community that, that there hasn't been more notice on what the policy is that we're going to be voting on.
Thank, thank you. Is there a motion on the floor?
And if I may just add one more item, just for, with respect to the list of flags that were added, for instance, you know, the Ukrainian flag was put there because this is basically a list of past flag raisings. But again, that was an annual, that was solidarity, and who knows, that Ukrainian flag may not be flown again, or for, there may be reasons why that might not be appropriate in the future. And that's where I just caution against preapproving a slate of flags on, on a go-forward. I mean, preapproving by this board, this election board as of January, but I mean, including in a policy for time memorial, I think that it does require a fresh look, as First Selectman mentioned, that flags do change meanings. I mean, the Gadsden flag was a revolutionary floor, revolutionary war militia flag, so that's a military, it was a military flag, but it has changed meaning since then. Obviously, a lot more time has passed. And I think that, and I know that the lobby is predominantly on pride, gay pride, and I think there's no issue that that will be flown, that will continue to be flown, just like it continues to be flown in Hartford, but it is actually, you know, against Hartford's policy, it's not against our policy as it stands now. So I just wanted to elaborate on that.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate that.
So my motion was to amend the draft with those two words, and then I think we have to approve the draft.
We, we have comment from the public?
Well, do we, can we vote on this, on this amendment first, and then take the comment?
Yeah, however you see fit on taking public.
Because we still, we still have to vote on it, but this is just for an amendment.
So my, my motion was to amend Section 3A, First Sentence Proposal Legacy Slate of Flags, to be displayed throughout the calendar year, which will be consistent with past practices.
I'd like to our First Selectman to.
Fred Camillo seconds that. All those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so public.
Yeah, and just so you know, the, the public feedback, there was significant amount over the few weeks where, I think most people ended up where we are here. But the only other, there was really nothing for the free-for-all option, number three. And there were several people in the community that reached out and did not want this, they wanted to just fly the American flag, the Connecticut flag, and the Greenwich flag. And I certainly understand that, because we all know that the number one flag that we worry about is the American flag. So that's the thing that rallies us all. But I think over the, over. the American flag. So that's the thing that rallies us all. But I think over the time, over time, this list, as I said, is probably going to grow, because these are community builders. I've never I've never attended one that's been the bad one. It's always been a good experience. It's been something that I think brings people together. So I suspect that we're going to get some requests. But there's also going to be some requests, I think, that we may have to, you know, future boards may have to say no, only after discussing it and getting feedback, because some, again, we've already seen some requests that are going to cause a lot of controversy. But I think this protects the town. It gives us an ability to address, discuss, get input, and then vote. So I think you put a lot of work into this, Laura. So thank you so much.
Sure.
Much appreciated. Okay, I see one hand up.
Mr. Camillo, we also have an online speaker after Mr. Meskers.
Okay, we'll hold him up.
Lauren Taylor.
Oh, okay. Ms. Taylor will be followed, Mr. Meskers will be followed by Ms. Taylor.
As your state representative, I'm responsible to represent my entire district. As your RTM member, I'm responsible to represent the District of Old Greenwich. The flags we've flown at Town Hall are representations of our diversity and our acceptance of all members of our society, including our members with disabilities, including our African American citizens, including those who celebrate pride. They're all inclusive. There is no reason whatsoever not to grandfather those flags in our policy. It is very simple and very easy. And if you ask me, at this point, if we're going to bring it forward, even the policy you're proposing, I'd like to see it before the election, because I think the 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 town residents have a have a right to know where their selectmen stand in the idea of that diversity and that vote. And personally, I think it's much stronger and better to vote with an approved list and have a policy on how flags are either included or removed from that list. The idea that we're going to go to Groundhog Day every sun every year, subject to the whims of the of the selectmen who have two-year terms, I don't think it's acceptable. I think it's questionable. In fact, I'm very angry to have to be up at the podium today. The flag policy, there were two issues that arose. It was the ruling out of Boston, it's the ruling of the Supreme Court on the flags in Boston. And the second issue is the disgraceful placement of anti-gay flags lawn signs in front of our Town Hall, which have, to my knowledge, not been aggressively pursued. The idea that as a result of those issues.
Excuse me, I'm going to cut you off there and correct you. It was aggressively pursued, and the Police Department, I take offense as that, as a police commissioner, looked into that extensively. You may continue.
Thank you. Aggressively would have been resolving the video issues as well. So thank you.
As you know, sir, that the cameras out there were just out of reach, that flagpole was just out of reach of that. You know that already. So it's don't, please do not grandstand. Go on with your your comments.
I won't grandstand as long as you don't grandstand. So I appreciate that.
No, no.
But I am making a statement about diversity.
I'm running the meeting, so please continue.
That's fine. I'm making an issue about diversity and inclusion, which is a problem in this town. And if you fail to acknowledge that problem, you fail to resolve the issues. And I don't think the policy is adequate. And we've in the last conversation we had in the public meeting, I was led to understand that we would actively consider grandfathering. And it's clear, regardless of this legacy wording, that we have decided not to grandfather. And that's, I urge you all to vote no on the policy. I think it's not inclusive, and I think it harms our community.
Thank you. Thank you. And as again, as we mentioned, this is basically allowing all of the ones that we've had here. The reasons have been stated to protect the town going forward. It takes about two minutes to go over this and approve this, probably less every January. I think it's the proper one. And as somebody who hears from all people, not just in one district, that this is overwhelmingly, people are supporting this. Again, there was only a few people who preferred having the three flags up there. But we've conferred with our town attorney, legal, and they they agree that this protects the town going forward. And it's not a big stretch to to go over for every two, all of two minutes. And using her verbally and and trying to rile people up, it's not.
It's a threat.
It's, yeah, it's not. I take it as a threat. It's uncalled for. And certainly, it'll have no bearing on my vote today.
Yeah, I'm disappointed that somebody would mix this into the election and make a threat like that. And the demanding texts that I've been receiving.
Excuse me.
That's how I'm perceiving it. That's how I'm perceiving it. And and to to suggest that I'm not inclusive, that's how I'm perceiving it. And that's how I read the texts as well. It's just really disappointing. I'm trying, I've always looked for compromise. I've always looked for win-win solutions. It's a big issue. And I'm just really disappointed and upset.
And I am as well. Yeah, well, this this, we have worked really hard in this, and Laura put a lot of time into this, a lot of thought went into this. And I'm, I am confident that the overwhelming majority of people in this town will see through those remarks. Is there a motion?
No, another question about Ms. Taylor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Taylor, the floor is yours.
Texting away.
Can you unmute Ms. Taylor?
Ms. Taylor, could you please unmute yourself?
Is she still there?
Okay, if you can't unmute yourself, we're going to have to move on.
Five. I apologize. Sorry about that. You certainly can try next time. But sorry about that. Anyway, is there a motion?
Sorry, Lauren Raven's so moved.
Fred Camillo seconds, all in favor. Fred Camillo is a yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, no.
Okay, that carries two to one. All righty. So going on to the next one, I missed my thing for a second. Sorry. Going on to the next one is new business. So that's it for old business. A request for temporary closure of the Sound Beach Avenue for the OG Merchants Association First Night. And is our buddy Rich Fulton? Let's see if Rich is joining us.
Rich is online.
Good morning, Rich.
Patting Andy. Did you see him patting Andy?
Yeah.
And he's already blowing up.
He should be ashamed of himself.
Texting.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Good morning, Rich.
Hey, how are you? First light, first light. You said first night.
You're coming in very faintly, Rich. If you could speak closer to your microphone. I think Jenny's messing with the audio, too.
Here, let me adjust the microphone here. Can you hear me now?
Just barely, but maybe a little louder, Rich?
I have it all the way up.
I apologize. Is that any better?
I could vaguely hear you. We could, we could hear you.
We can hear you well enough.
Let me go to, let me go to something different here. Any better now?
Same.
Can you hear me, Fred?
Getting worse.
Ready?
You're going, getting farther and farther away.
I apologize. Can you hear me?
I don't know what else to. Hey, Rich, Rich, why don't you call my cell number, and I'll I'll put you on there?
All right, great. I will do right now.
Okay.
Hey, Freddie, thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay, I'm. Can you speak just a little louder, Rich?
Yep. All right, can can everyone hear me?
A little bit better.
All right, I apologize. In Old Greenwich, and between Wi-Fi and cellular, we're challenged every day. So I appreciate you taking time to hear for our annual request for First Light. It's going to be the first Saturday in December, as always, which is December 2. We, in the past, had featured horse drawn carriages. Unfortunately, we're unable to 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 contract a carriage company. And thankfully, the Cosco volunteers have stepped up, and we will have two of their antique trucks decorated for the holidays, offering rides, and staffed by at least three or four guys per truck, operating under the same road closure that we've we've been granted for the past 20 years. So other than that, all the same great traditions with, you know, disco at the Bagel Shop, and Santa Claus, and the Sound Beach Volunteer Band at the Firehouse, and then all kinds of fun in and out of every store in town. So we're requesting the same road closure from five to eight with an hour before and an hour after for setup and cleanup.
Okay, thanks, Rich. It's always a great, a great event there that you put on and with the merchants. And certainly, I'm looking forward to attending it again. I'll let my colleagues ask any questions that they may have or make any comments.
Just where does the time go? Didn't we just do this?
No questions. I'll just say, thank you for all the organizing that goes into this. I do live in Old Greenwich. First Light is easily one of my favorite events of the year. If anyone from our community is listening and hasn't attended, I highly recommend it. It's a lovely celebration of Old Greenwich.
Okay.
It's a great event. The chief TV has been really helpful the last couple of years, helping with staffing issues. And so I appreciate his additional support as the traffic division at the Police Department as well. So we're excited, as always, and agree, where did the time go? The boat is still in the water, but this event is, you know, two and a half months away.
Okay, Rich, thanks. So we'll, we'll be back in two weeks, I guess, to to approve this, just to get some public input. But I'm sure we won't get anything negative, that's for sure.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Take care, Rich. Be well.
Okay, take care. Bye bye.
Okay. Next up is the request to dedicate the Emergency Operations Center in memory of our friend Danny Warzowa. And Steve Warzowa is here to chat with us. Morning, Steve.
Good morning, everyone. It's been a while since I've been up in front of any town court. Oh.
It's on.
It's on. My name is Stephen Warzella. Good morning, members of the Board of Selectmen, First Selectman Camillo, Selectwoman Raven, and Selectperson Stone-McWigan. On behalf of my entire family, I would like to thank you for having me here today. I would also like to take a brief moment to thank the entire community for the kindness, love that you all have shown to us over the past two years since my dad passed. There's actually barely a day that goes by that myself or one of our family members is not seen by somebody in in the store around town. And they regale us with the story of how my dad helped them with this issue or that, or, you know, my house flooded, and, you know, he was able to get FEMA or whatnot there. So it's really, really wonderful, wonderful thing to be around and see that. You know, not long after Dad passed, many people came up to us suggesting that there should be a permanent way to memorialize my dad's memory and honor his service to the to the town that he was born, raised in, and loved so much. After speaking with many, many people, numerous first responders, town elected officials, we felt that naming the Emergency Operations Center was the most appropriate thing to do. The EOC was truly where my dad shined, working with all departments during extremely difficult times and situations to ensure that the safety and well-being of all of our residents was truly his passion. While he was the public face of emergency response here in Greenwich, he was also the last person to take credit for his work. It was always about the team. This is not an honor that he would have ever sought, but he would be deeply moved. Our entire family is very grateful and touched that, in a small way, his memory and his service will be memorialized by the town that he dedicated his life to. Thank you very much for having me, and I will answer any questions that you guys have to the best of my ability.
Well, thank you so much, Steve. And this is a first read. This is a first read for Danny. This is a first read. But this is something we've talked about for two years. And I know we talked about a lot of different venues. But you spent a lot of time in that room with your dad. And he, during a storm, he would sit there, and he wouldn't move. And he'd be there all day, all night. And he did, he shined. And when the pandemic hit, he stepped up. And that's why Greenwich, you know, that's one of the real strong reasons why Greenwich, one of many, but he was right there, why Greenwich came out of the pandemic so well. We were well informed. We met every morning, every afternoon, informed the public. And he had a lot to do with all of that. And so Danny was a great guy. And certainly, I miss him a lot. And we'll, we'll let the public weigh in on this next two weeks. But we'll have a vote in two weeks. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, thank you. Definitely a great way to honor your dad and his commitment and his service to the town. He was sort of relentless in making sure that our big community of 60,000 plus people, you know, were safe in some of the most trying times, whether it was the pandemic, or, you know, hundred-year storms and things of that nature. So this is, you know, well deserved. Thanks.
Claire.
I'm going to save the email. I actually came today not because of Central ID, once we were off the agenda. I came because I'm here for Steve. I wanted to support the honoring of a man who has given so much to this town. So I'm fully in support.
Well, thank you, Claire. And just to note, to add on, Danny was not only a town native, he was a town employee. He was also a volunteer fire chief of Glenville, and then became the, actually, the the fire chief of the whole department, which may have been the first time that ever happened, I think, in Greenwich. Correct me if I'm wrong. And then became our emergency, our first ever emergency operations director. So it really, it really fits this honor. So thank you, Steve. We'll see you in two weeks. Next up is a request for DPW Greenwich-Stanford Multi-Use Trail Grant Acceptance Process Approval. And Michael Kistlack is here, our civil engineer. Good morning, Michael.
Hello. Good morning, everybody. Michael Kistlack with DPW, like Fred said. So I know we've talked about this a little bit before with the Select Board, but I'll just give a brief overview. So we were awarded a grant through the Connecticut Department of Environmental Energy and Environmental Protection, DEEP, back in April, for a to plan and design a multi-use path as kind of a joint effort with the city of Stanford to promote and increase active recreation and transportation. So the project that we were awarded the grant for was a multi-use path from Binny Park in Old Greenwich to Bucuzzi Park, which is in southwest Stanford, just over the border, which is 2.6 miles total. And so the grant, the project was a total of $338,000 estimated planning and design costs, which covers 80%, 80% is to be covered by the grant, and then 20% is to be paid by Greenwich and Stanford, which we'll split kind of per data, per rata, based on the mileage. And so we've been waiting for the for DEEP to get us the contract that we need to, so we can proceed, you know, according to their terms and conditions. So we finally got that about a month ago in August. And it requires us to indemnify the state. And we've, you know, requested waiver of that. But their response was really, you know, no, you know, take the money or leave it. So in order to accept that, we need the Board of Selectmen and the RTM to approve that so we can go forward. So that's why we're here today. And we're going to be trying to get on the RTM agenda for October. So I can let Laura McGeechie from the town attorney's offices can kind of go more in depth on the indemnity. But that's kind of an overview of where we are with the project. So here for any questions, if you need anything.
Thank you, Michael. Yes, some people I know, when we did the event with Governor Lamont, some people got confused and thought that we were getting money for actual to put to do the work. And we had explained to it, was this the first step in the process? But thank you, Laura.
Yes, Laura McGeechie on this DPW contract. This is the Connecticut Recreational Trails Grant administered through DEEP. This is the Connecticut Recreational Trails Grant administered through DEEP, which we all know is the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. It is the Bureau of Outdoor Recreation. It's a $270,400 grant, again, just for the design phase of the multi-use Stanford Greenwich Bike Path. And however, again, the state of Connecticut, I was here last month for the Federal Army Corps of Engineers, and the state DEP is of the, obviously, also of the mindset that they require indemnification from the town, that they have sovereign immunity, et cetera. And I do have it in writing that they will not waive that requirement. And, you know, again, in order to get the grant funding, we need to agree to these provisions, which seem to be coming up more often also as we see. So, I know this is the first read. This isn't, we'll have a second read on that, on this as well. So, we can also post the contract as well in advance, you know? And it is being submitted to the RTM for the October meeting. And I also understand that there's an application for interim appropriations for the design that's going to go to the BET. So, any questions I can answer, but we can certainly put up the contract for, you know, these contracts can be a bit dry, but in the event anybody is inclined to read it, it will be public and people would have an opportunity to do so, you know? And we can do that in short order in advance of the second read.
Thank you, Laura. Any comments or questions? So, is this? Go ahead.
No, no questions. Thanks for all the work that has gone into this.
So, is this, if this goes into October, to the RTM in October, this is time-sensitive?
It is, but I believe it's the October 23rd, RTM, so we can come back before you for a second read unless you're inclined.
But isn't the deadline to submit, or are they waiving that this Friday?
Right. We are prepared to submit to the RTM for tomorrow.
Oh, right. And then you'll just tell them the board vote afterwards. Got it.
Right. That we've had, you know, right. We're just not reporting, but we can report at the RTM that it's been before the Board of Selectmen unless, you know, you're inclined to vote today. But we have time to come before you again, before the RTM meeting, which was not the case for the Army Corps of Engineers.
I don't anticipate anybody objecting to this, but, you know.
Do you want to just vote today?
I'm okay with voting today.
I mean, if all things are the same, if we do have time for a second read, just because we, when we waive a second read, when there isn't a compelling reason, then we get pushback from everyone who doesn't want to, you know, to have the burden of having to come before us a second time. And you never know. We've seen it on a number of items where we thought, I mean, I would say, you know, sense of the meeting room, we would have all said yes, or we would have all said no. And then we've had some feedback that has changed our minds. So, I, thank you for your patience.
Absolutely. There is time. That's why I'm not asking, you know, necessarily for you to expedite that and waive a second read. So, there is time. We'll post the contract for anybody that wants to.
And you could mention it. I know we have the flexibility, so we can do that. But certainly, I think you have three, you know, affirmative votes here waiting, but just, you know, we'll just wait it out if it's not time-sensitive.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
I'll pass on reading the contract.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Laura. Okay, the last one is a request for referral for MI status for Strickland Road housing development. Sam Romeo, our Chair of the Greenwich Communities, is here. And I also see Commissioner Jim Buttel. I see the President, Tony Johnson, in the back there. Good to see you two days in a row. I don't see anybody else. I see some people maybe want to talk on it. Good morning, Sam.
Good morning. For the record, I'm, my name is Sam Romeo, Chairman of the Greenwich Housing Authority, AKA Greenwich Communities. I'd like to say a little bit something about MI before we get into this, because there was some discussion earlier about MI. First of all, I served on the RTM for like 20 years, was a land use chairman for 15 years, and chairman of my district. So, I'm pretty familiar with the town process of municipal government and all the boards and commissions. And Peter Berg now is the Chair of the Land Use Committee. So, we're all versed on how the process works. And I remember many, many years ago, a former First Selectman, John Morgenot, dealt with this very issue, like was discussed here this morning, about MIs. And there were some people from the community that were questioning the process and felt that there should be more information given to the Board of Selectmen before they endorsed and went forward with an MI. However, I think Mr. Morgenot so eloquently put it, was that this is only the first step. We're not in an approval process. We are the first step in the process, and we will authorize and send forward to the next level of processing where the professionals are, where the land use agencies are, where the public works is, health and safety, drainage. Everything will be reviewed by professionals and engineers. So, this is the first step of our process in an MI, and I think that says it all. This is only the first process. There's going to be many a public hearings and many meetings in planning and zoning and the Public Works Department for all of the issues to be addressed as well as environment. So, I just wanted to bring that up. And just like I say, Mr. Morgenot addressed it so eloquently.
The more things change, the more they stay the same.
Right. So, here we are back again.
And 15 years from now, we'll have the same issue. Thanks, Sam.
Having said that, good morning, and I'm pleased to be here. We, I have our Jim Buttel, our Vice Chairman of the Greenwich Communities, Tony Johnson, our Executive Director, Tony DeAndrea is here as our site planner, and Rudy Ridberg, our architect. We're very excited about this project. It's going to be the first of its time. It takes unused property, really, underused property, that the town of Greenwich presently owns is the Cosco railroad station on Strickland Road. Right now, you have just railroad parking there, and we plan or ask for an MI to build above that parking lot. There's been many, many discussions in the state of Connecticut, on the state level and on the local levels, about building in a transit district. We saw an opportunity to use an underutilized town piece of property, and I think that it'd be for best use for workforce housing, right there in the transit district. I believe we check all the boxes. We have a park right there across the street. We have a public municipal boatyard across the street, walking distance to the train, which is right there, and downtown shopping at Cosco. So, I think we check all of the boxes that, you know, that we, the state and municipalities have been talking about, and we see an opportunity here. And we're thinking outside the box, and what we are proposing is 48 units, a two-bedroom, two-bathroom workforce housing. And unlike 830G projects and developers that come into the town of Greenwich, they only are required to allow 30% of the units to be affordable. Our proposal is to try to make them 100% affordable in perpetuity, unlike the 830G proposal, which, after 40 years, those market rate units that we approve under 830G become market rate. So, 40 years from now, everyone that's approved goes back to market rate, and the towns and municipalities are back to where they started 40 years later. So, those are some of the unintended consequences that was never discussed during the state. And there is some fallacies in that 830G. So, there's no longevity in keeping that apartment affordable. Again, I think we check all of the boxes about transit district and whatever and building. I think there has been some federal legislation recently passed addressing this type of issues. Actually, there's something in there for everybody. I think even the people who are worried about climate change. Well, if you're going to be using the rail, you're not going to be using your car. So, there you go, the fossil fuels. So, we believe that we have a first step in the process. It's going to be a very long process. There's no doubt in my mind that there's going to be opposition. People are going to come out being a sirs, like there always is. But we're doing it because it's something that we see needs to be done. We are presently not even halfway there, or close to, a little bit over half, of the required number of units that is required. We need to have 10% of our housing stock in town deemed affordable. I think we're about 5.8%. And I think of that 5.8%, the Greenwich Communities controls 5.4% of the units. So, I think that these units, 48 of them, will go 100% towards helping that goal. And I think that, I've sent a letter, actually, last night, an email off to the governor, which I'm confident that, once I get to speak with Ned, Ned's going to be very pleased to see this, because we've had some contacts, and I think he'll be very supportive of what we're doing here in Greenwich, and he's said so in the past when we did Armstrong Court. So, again, this is using, I believe, unutilized property, as we did at Armstrong Court. We put in 18 new townhouses there in underutilized property, as we did at Adams Garden. We did another 11 units over there of townhouses that were underused property, and we're going to be doing at Corey Knoll. So, you'll be seeing another proposal there, because that property presently is underused, and it's six acres there, and I think we can do a job. Presently, we have a long-range plan for the town of Greenwich on land that we presently own, not counting this 48 that we're asking for, that we can build another 350 units to help that goal of affordable housing in the town of Greenwich. So, with that, I'd like to ask our Executive Director if he has anything he'd like to add, and we have Jim Buttel, I think he'd like to say something also.
Sure. Thanks. Morning, Tony.
Hey, good morning. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you again. Two days in a row.
Yeah. Only thing I would add, Sam did a very good job of explaining what we're doing. My position is, and I think our position is, is that although we're asking for it, we, Greenwich Communities, are the ones here asking for this, we're not really the developer. We're trying to do this on behalf of the town. So, we're not here for a fight or controversy or what have you. This is an idea that we think has merit. So, what we're looking for you to do is to consider the merit of the idea. As you get into the plan, you'll notice that it's, you all are familiar with the Cosco parking lot. And we are the abutting neighbors, by the way, you know, to the property. And then there's the railroad track, and then, you know, a little bit further down the street is a condominium association. But in terms of highest and best use of property and the location for something like this, affordable housing, that it really doesn't infringe on the community to a great extent, we think it's a great idea. And so, from that perspective, I think what we're trying to do is to say to you, here's a great idea. 830G is a problem across the town. Everything I read in the newspaper, some developers come into town with an 830G idea, and they're not going to stop, right? And I can say, years ago, when I tried to bring development plans forward, they were shot down. If we would have taken any of those plans at the time and utilized them, we wouldn't be having this problem today. So, as long as there's going to be an affordability problem in the town, you're going to continue to have this. It's not going to stop. And the developers are getting bigger. They're not getting smaller, right? And as Sam said, we are talking about 100% development. What we do and what we try to do is 100% affordable. No one else is doing that, and forever. And even the properties that you do do 20, 30 years from now, they're going to come off, they're going to fall off the rolls, like the old Putnam Green Affordable Housing did. So, I just wanted to say that it's just the housing authority as the requester. Don't make us the developer. We're the Requestor. We're requesting this idea to go forward and to put it out there in the public to have a conversation about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tony. I appreciate it. Jim?
Good morning. Good morning, all. Jim Buttel. I think I'm going to win the lottery, but I don't think, it may be Peter. We've had other people up tonight. I spent 24 years on the RTM. Spent three terms as the District Chairman of Cosco, or the big half, anyway, District Eight. I now live in District Two, which is the small half of Cosco. But I'm born and raised in Greenwich, spent my whole life here. Ran a nonprofit in town for 20-plus years. And I just want to talk about, because this is the first read, and it's going to be the public's first awareness of this proposal, and we get the reaction, we typically, when they hear housing and they hear affordable, we will get negative reaction. Tony mentioned that we are one of the abutting neighbors, and I, for the first time ever, I have been a housing commissioner now for 11 years. For the first time in the history of my serving, I got phone calls, there were some pretty nasty phone calls from people when we acquired the property on Strickland Road and put initially three and then four, in total, units.
Five now.
Five total units of housing on that property. The neighbors who complain about stuff like that, I got to tell you, and we, our full board met last night, it was described, that property looked like it was owned by the Beverly Hillbillies before they packed up the truck and moved to Beverly. We hauled.
Nine, 10, 40-yard dumpsters out of that property.
Of trash. I remember it. And to anyone who is going to have an initial reaction that perhaps is negative, they don't like the idea of air rights and elevated buildings, let me just say, the biggest detractors, when we first started the Armstrong Court rehabilitation, are our biggest advocates now. When we built those new units in front of Armstrong, there were people who contacted real estate agents, thinking it was a condominium development, and how do I buy one? We're not going to build ugly housing. We have a number of projects we do in town, and I just want to talk about the people that will be living in these units. These are your kindergarten teachers. These are people who serve as volunteer firemen. You know, in town, besides 25 years on the RTM, I served and got to know our first Selectman and his lack of a consistent strike zone. As a Babe Ruth baseball coach.
One more word, you're out of here.
For a dozen years. You tossed me once. He did. He threw me out once. But, you know, and I think of guys like Sal Strazza and George, and the other people who step up to coach our kids' sports teams. These are the people that will be living in these units. When we met last night, we met for the first time in the new community room at Armstrong Court, which we, about three weeks ago, dedicated to the memory of Winston Robinson. Another person who served this town for almost his entire life was the head of the NAACP. Again, these are our neighbors. And I just want to conclude with, well, I'm going to miss one major important point here. I grew up in Greenwich, as I said, and for years, I rented property on Cosco Avenue from Rocco Sisi. And I had a two- And I had a two-bedroom unit that I was only paying $1,200 a month for. Got married, had a kid. Finally, in my late 40s, bought a home in Greenwich. And there's often NIMBY reaction to these developments. Well, let me say, I'm not just a Housing Commissioner. I reside at 34 Butler Street. This development will be in my backyard. And I'm not going to be NIMBY. I'm going to coin a new term. I'm going to be YIMBY. Yes, in my backyard. Because these are the people that we want in our community. These are the people that fill the boards and commissions. And it's important to. Great room and living area. There are doors on there, large patio doors, but we're not providing balconies. There will be a railing, we call it a Juliet balcony, for lack of a better term. So then schematically, we've come up with a, for the next level, is a box, an elevation of the four units that, so basically, the two floors are, the upper two floors are residential. The on-grade floor from the upper parking lot is for all parking, and that parking is only for the house, for the units themselves. On that level, we have about 98 parking spaces, and 4 ADA, I forgot to mention that. And then they will be, two of the two buildings, they'll be similar in scale, residential in design. We're showing some gables, and we'll be doing some, you know, siding, whether it'll be a hardy plank, clapboard, or shingle. We're still away from that, but we're just showing the mass of the four buildings that are there. And I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Thanks, Rudy. Looks really good. And I know, back Tony's, back up Tony's point, somebody looking at this, we've spoken about this to people over town, and even some associations, and who are concerned about 830G and Hartford mandates, and also people who care about affordable housing. And it's, this is a very popular idea. That being said, to also to Jim's point, you know, we want to make sure that the people know that this, we're just throwing it out there right now. It's an idea. It's not something we're going to be voting on in two weeks. But we, surface parking lots are not looked upon very favorably anymore, for good reason. It's just, they don't really serve that, it's not the best use of land. And that's, land planners all over the country have come to that conclusion. So as we look around, and I go around town, looking at these lot, surface lots, seeing how we can get more parking, we just did that last week, something like this certainly would make a lot of sense on a lot of levels, because it's right near a mass transit, a train. As Tony said, you're, the neighboring property is Greenwich Communities. But again, we, people who will look at this, and somebody may throw it up on Facebook tonight, and you'll get, you know, 47 comments about, you know, what are they doing to our neighborhood? That's not going on. We want to make sure people weigh in on this, because we often be, you know, aware of the fact that every neighborhood, including this, is under a threat of 830G. No one is safe until we get to that 10%. And Greenwich Communities is our number-one tool to not only get to 10%, but as Jim said, to provide such great housing. And I will always bring up Armstrong Court, where we were last night for a meeting with the Housing Authority. Having had a relative that lived, actually, a few relatives, my grandmother lived there. I'm very proud of what's there now. And I only wish my grandmother was alive to live in that unit that she had, which is not three times the size of what she had. But it's the right thing to do, as Jim said. But also, if you're just concerned about land values, 830G will do a lot more to your, diminish the value of your land and your property than these beautiful units would. But again, we want to make sure that we're, we don't want a petition started tomorrow about this, we're not there, we're just, we want to make sure that, hear from everybody, including neighbors like Jim, who's supportive, but there's going to be some that have some questions, and we'd like to hear that. So appreciate all you're doing and the approach you're taking here. It's a good one, I believe.
One last comment, Fred, if you don't mind. We will provide, you know, really nice landscaping. The buildings will be fully street-treed along Strickland Road. We still have the buffer along, trees along Connecticut Turnpike. We'll have trees against even the other community building on the next Strickland Road property. And the building that you'll see will not be perceived from the exterior being on stilts. On the interior, where there will be stilts, per se, columns, to support the level. But the outside, we're able to build, maybe we'll have some brick walls there, but we'll have punched openings, so it's not this. And same thing in the basement, so that it's fairly open for light, ventilation, and air, and certainly scale. Okay? And we would develop that as we go along.
A lot of thought, wouldn't it?
Thanks.
Especially the insides of the unit looks pretty modern with today's living. Two bathrooms.
I'd like to have Mr. DeAndrea just say a few words on the site and drainage and whatnot.
Absolutely. I was going to say, good morning, Tony, but we're past that. Good afternoon.
Sam's always throwing a curveball, you know. But we did work with, he's out, yeah. I don't know if Rudy really fully mentioned it, but also on the interior of the platform, there is going to be greenery and planting in the middle of the quad. So that's very good also. The ideal aspect of this property is that you do have a low area on one section of Strickland Road, and then we rise 10 feet, so it's an ideal change in elevation. The site will have to be excavated down to create that lower level at one thing. But I agree with Sam, as we discussed in the development of this concept, is that it truly is an underutilized resource, and housing is ideally suited in that location. So drainage is not a problem. We do have the close proximity to the outfall. All the water will be treated, of course, in accordance with the drainage manual, very close to sewage pump station, so that's not a capacity problem. And all the other amenities that are in close proximity. So I certainly support the idea.
Thank you very much, Tony. And I like hearing the fact that we're putting some soil in there. That's a good thing, not only just for flooding, but also for the aesthetics. Peter, looks like you're going to be the bat and cleanup today. Last one.
So again, I'm Peter Berg. I'm Chairman of the RTM's Land Use Committee, but I'm not here in that capacity. I am a 45-year resident of Cos Cob, RTM member for 20 years. And I served on the Affordable Housing Task Force that created the trust. So I just want to endorse this project. I can't imagine a better site for affordable housing in town. I think that people who work in Greenwich should be able to live in Greenwich if they want to, and not sit in traffic for hours and pay for fuel and car repairs. From this site, they can walk, bike, take a train to work within Greenwich. And we talked about workforce, but, you know, think about the people who work downtown, in restaurants, cooks, waiters, store clerks. Our libraries are notoriously staffed by part-time people who are not well-paid. So this is a, this is a great project. People complain about traffic, and I truly think that this will reduce traffic congestion in town, not just on I-95, but also within town. And I go back to the MI issue. I wish the town attorney would agree that the test of this MI is consistency with the goals of the POCD, the Plan of Conservation and Development. And that that's all, that you're not expected to study site plans or other zoning documents, and that that will speed this project up. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. Okay.
If nobody else wants to speak, I'd just like to finalize it and say, the way I look at it, we are trying to save the character of the town of Greenwich. And if we want to have the character of the town stay the same without having the developers come in and put in seven-story buildings in central Greenwich, like was proposed on Church Street, which would block out sunlight all around at Fort Ward, we don't see ourselves as the problem. We see Greenwich Communities as the solution to keep Greenwich green, keep the green in Greenwich. So I hope that this discussion will further bring out other people, and we can let them know that we're here to do quality housing and not to just build something that can be just paced together. And you can just see the results of our involvement in the community and what we've been doing. So we plan on doing a great job.
I believe Ms. Larkin would like to speak.
Okay. Jenny, for the wrap-up.
Hi. And just really quickly, tonight is the Affordable Housing Task Force Public Forum, where we can, you know, we're going to hear all about how they're trying to raise money to help offset some of this stuff. One of the videos that they share is actually Fred Camillo, you may know him. He talks about the Greenwich that we grew up in. And the Greenwich that I grew up in had policemen and firemen and teachers. They were your neighbors, like we all lived in the same neighborhood. And they have been, in some ways, driven out by people who've, you know, the property values, people have been, and I came here originally from Large Mountain, New York. So I did originally come here from Westchester when I was 10. But the thing is, we all used to live side by side. And this is, this is actually maintaining Greenwich and the people who live in Greenwich by allowing our, you know, those people to live in the same neighborhoods as all of us.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Appreciate that. Okay.
I do have some questions and clarifications, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Did you just, Fred, did you just say we are not voting on it in two weeks?
I don't think so, because we want to, this is an idea we want to get out there, because if you say you're voting on this in two weeks, it'll become a political issue, as we saw today with some things, unfortunately, which was embarrassing. And so we're trying to promote affordable housing where people can live in a, as Jenny said, together, side by side, the Greenwich we grew up in, and also to get the state off our backs. But we can't do it if we, you know, if we do vote in two weeks, there'll be a petition Tuesday morning, and people will be playing politics with us. So we don't want to do that. And also, there are some people who legitimately have questions who live there. And we have to expect that, because if I lived there, and I didn't know this, and I saw this, I'd say, whoa, what's going on there? I think we want to make sure, you know, the next thing is maybe to go out to the community and just to slowly integrate this idea into that, and get some feedback, and get some feedback.
All right.
Yeah.
Sorry. So going back to our earlier agenda item about the MI process, I just want clarification, is the presentation that was submitted to us and posted, does that satisfy a site plan, or do we need?
What we just read, no. There's only preliminary. There's a whole lot more that's going to be.
You're saying it's a preliminary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a whole lot more needed.
Okay.
So that's why, this is the first step in moving it on to planning and zoning, where we'll have a drainage plan, you'll have FARs, all kinds of questions, health, safety, sewage.
It was confusing. Yeah, it was confusing, because it's its first read, because it's the first time we're seeing it. But we, and I suspected that that may have caused some confusion. But that's why at the beginning, I think a bunch of us were saying that this is not going to be something that's going to be voted on in two weeks. This is the first step, just to get the idea.
So before, before this board is asked to refer it to PNC, we are going to wait for?
We're not even close. We just wanted to get this out there. It's also, at a time when we're doing a forum tonight, this is, I think, a very timely presentation to get, keep people focused on the good works that you all are doing, but also on what the task at hand before us.
Right. I would add, we're trying to move forward the conversation. It's great to talk about affordable housing, but until you start to identify locations and ideas of how you can create it, it's not going to move forward. I just wanted to say something about my neighborhood, because that's where it's going. And I don't want this to come off the wrong way, but my neighborhood's moving in the wrong direction. I bought my home 10 years ago for about $720,000. Two houses closer to this project is 40 Butler Street. Developers bought that house, flippers. They bought it for about $1 million, probably three years ago. It just sold for $2.2 million. The house directly across the street from me. Family had lived there for 50 years. I don't want to go into why they sold the house, but he had been, among many other positions, the headmaster at Whippy School. They thought they were selling it to a family who wanted to come in and develop their dream home. No, turned out to be another set of flippers. I have had to restrain my wife from calling the town on the amount of trucks parked on our street, the fact those builders are working till 8:00 at night. They're working on Sundays. So a lot of building going on in our neighborhood. So you're going to have probably the new homers, owners of 40 Butler Street, going, oh, my God, I just paid $2.2 million for this house. I didn't know this was coming. So there will be some negative reaction. But I'm a homeowner where I could be looking at a $720,000 house that's nicer than 40, that just sold for $2.2, and I would rightly be saying, oh, well, wait, I don't want this, because I'm going to lose money. No. I want the neighborhood to reflect what Greenwich should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. Okay. Upper comment period. I think we've had enough comments. Appointments and nominations?
None today.
Thank you, Lauren. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you all for coming here today. Thanks, Jenny. Thanks, Ken. And thanks, Don.